One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So with the flag of the state in its field, and the sea as symbol of perfect friendship among the young.
S. Cordova, would you lead us?
Yes, please pray with me. Heavenly Father, as this new day dawns, I come before you seeking the purity of heart that only you can give. In a world where impurity can easily infiltrate our lives, I ask for your divine intervention to keep my heart pure. Let my heart be a sanctuary where your Holy Spirit dwells, a place of holiness, untainted by the world's allure. Cleanse my heart of any desires, thoughts, or attitudes that are not pleasing to you. Create in me a clean heart, O God, and renew a steadfast spirit within me. Let my heart reflect the beauty of your holiness, filled with love, compassion, and righteousness. May my heart's desires align with your will and your purposes for my life. Amen.
We'll go ahead and get started with any public comments.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Norbert Remper. I am a U.S. citizen and a resident of Eddy County. It has been said that hypocrisy is the tribute that vice pays to virtue. If that is so, then I think most of the invocations that open meetings of this county commission reek of tributes. I have talked to you before about the situation in New Mexico, which is a state that encourages, promotes, and supports with taxpayer money the murder of preborn children. Some of you may not be aware of this yet, but about a couple of months ago, our governor actually put advertisements into major Texas newspapers soliciting Texas murderers of babies, members of the medical profession, to come to New Mexico and ply their bloody trade here. By the way, there is already one of those doing this in Santa Teresa, about two hundred miles away from here. He lives in El Paso, and he murders babies over in Santa Teresa on our side of the state line. If you don't want this to happen in Eddy County, then you need to follow the example of the counties and communities toward east and make that impossible. You have been AWOL in this respect. This entire county and this commission has been AWOL in the job of protecting the lives of the children. It is time to change that. It is way past time to change that. Continued silence in the face of absolute evil is not only consent, it is also associated with another word starting with C, and that word is associated with the color yellow.
Do we have any more public comment? Seeing none, we'll move into our trailing agenda. First, we have commission meeting minutes for August sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Any questions or items to review for further discussion? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion to approve commission meeting minutes for August sixth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Epstein.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have commission meeting minutes for August twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Anything to look at further? Look for a motion to approve commission meeting minutes for August twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Epstein.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we'll move into consideration of Resolution R. twenty-four ninety-four opposing the proposed land protection plan environmental assessment for the Mulechu National Wildlife Refugee impacting eastern New Mexico counties and supporting the resolutions adopted and to be adopted by those impacted counties. I'm going to ask our board member, Louis Derrick, to come up and speak on behalf of this. While he's coming up, Louis Derrick had reached out to me a couple of months ago, and being that he is our board member for the New Mexico-Arizona Coalition, they had reached out asking if we would, as Eddy County, support a resolution in opposition of the Mulechu resolution. There are five counties here in Eddy, in New Mexico that are affected by it. Although we're not one of them, our neighboring counties are, such as Lee County, who's passed a resolution in opposition of this already. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Derrick for further explanation.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
The Mulechu Refuge was started, I think during Roosevelt years, and it was like a little over six thousand acres. And now the administration wants to expand it to seven hundred thousand acres, which affects five counties in New Mexico and several counties in Texas. They did have a meeting in Texas, and there was quite a bit of drawback and pretty good arguments over there because what they're trying to do is conservation easements and things like that. You've got to be careful with conservation easements because if you get into conservation easement, you pretty well lost your property. And it goes into effect that they call it voluntary, but I call it extortion because they can throw a lot of money at different things. And pretty soon you're closed in, and an area people do agree and you don't want to agree, well, voluntary kind of goes out the window. It kind of pushes you into it. And, but it's hard to see the map, but what I can find. But they even got another circle around that seven hundred thousand acres for seven million acres. And private property rights in this is going to affect tax base, whether it's in Texas or New Mexico, these counties also. And if they expand it to seven million acres, I don't, it's going to take in a lot more. And, but anyway, that's the bottom line on this deal. It goes by, you've heard the administrations America the Beautiful, which they changed from the thirty-thirty plan because it sounds better. And where they want thirty percent of water, thirty percent of land by twenty thirty, no matter how they get it. And they could even go as far as eminent domain, you know, takings. They have to pay you for it, but sometimes it's not the value of what it might actually be in some of these takings cases. So anyway, that's the resolution kind, and it kind of explains itself. We're supporting these counties. It's going to be affected because it might come down and bite us sooner or later. So anyway, that's that one.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Derrick?
Isn't this kind of the same bunch when you were Commissioner? And you were fighting something along the lines of cattle-free in ninety-three movement?
Yes, it was. Yeah, it was cattle-free ninety-three, cattle no more than ninety-four. It was a bunch of stuff like that, and it was kind of funny. Our own State Game Commission, the person at the time up there, administration had cattle-free by ninety-three set behind, on his wall. And it was, we had a talk about that.
So far, we've kind of pushed all this stuff back, but I'm scared to death sooner or later this is going to happen. And this will destroy land values. It'll destroy agriculture. You know, they'll eventually take the water rights away. I mean, it's just the way this whole thing's working. So far, we've won most of our battles in courts, if I'm not mistaken. Just who, who is pushing this, and what can we do to oppose it?
Well, the main thing is doing what we're doing right now, is doing the resolutions and just fighting it. It's like we have over the years, and we've pushed back and had a lot of wins. We've had a few losses, but we've had a lot of wins by doing what we're doing, and the counties getting together, like Coalition of Counties in New Mexico, Arizona. We've been in, I don't know how many lawsuits since I've been on this thing, and we've won more than we've lost, which is, which is helpful, but it all takes money, and that's the bottom line. And, and the feds have always got more money than anybody else because they're using our money to
Against us.
Against us, so.
But they do keep chipping away. I mean.
They do. It is, it's a serious matter.
Anybody else?
No, I'm happy to support this. I think one other thing is, you know, education. I've been able to talk on this a couple of times in some different groups, and it's shocking to me how many folks don't understand exactly based, to your point, they hear America the Beautiful, or, oh, we're protecting the lands, but they don't really correlate that to what that means. What does that really mean in the long run for us as citizens and our food and everything else that might impact it? When I hear that, it's pretty interesting to see how dramatic the room will change on their thoughts. So I thank you for what you do because I know you do a great job for us.
Well, this all goes back to a long time ago, to the thirty-thirty plan. You can go on the internet and look at the map. It's called the Wildland Project, and they have buffer zones. I mean, it's all over the United States. And, and there's not going to be any human activity in these areas. There's not going to be no hunting and recreation and stuff. They want you off, period. That's it.
I certainly appreciate everything that you are doing in regards to this, and thank you for being here today. That said, I'll look for a motion.
So moved.
Perfect. Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next, we have notification of payment of invoice for Eddy County's contribution to an effort by the Coalition of Arizona and New Mexico Counties to prepare an amicus brief for a suit filed by Western Environmental Law Center with regards to Fish and Wildlife Service rules from the Mexican wolf. And again, an update from Mr. Louis Derrick. Just real quick, a quick background. This resolution was approved a couple of years ago by the Commissioners for a thousand dollars. This was discussed back then for this amicus brief for the Mexican wolf. So we were bringing it forward. This invoice has already been paid, but we're bringing it forward to give you guys an update. And again, we asked Mr. Louis Derrick to come in and explain.
Okay. Land force, I think, is timed for five hundred dollars, but all we got, the Center for Biological Diversity is suing the Fish and Wildlife Service over the wolf issue. And right now, we're under the ten, what's called a ten J rule, where if something goes on and wolves go to killing livestock and costing the ranchers a lot of money. And this is mostly on the west side of the state, but it's coming this way. I'll put it that way, sooner or later. But anyway, they're trying to get it, we're under a non-essential right now, under the ten J rule. And if they win this lawsuit, it will become essential, where it folds away pretty well all. Wolf management and either remove the wolf or one way or another, remove the wolf, then they can move them to another place or whatever. But the problem of it is on this essential and non-essential is that they're trying to interbreed these wolves with the northern gray wolf, and it's going into hybridization because the Mexican wolf is so genetically declined with probably cough and dogs. They won't do a DNA test. They're afraid to because it would prove them wrong under the Endangered Species Act. But the problem with it is, on this hybridization with the northern wolf, they would illegal under the Endangered Species Act to hybridize these wolves to give them more genetic diversity. They are supposed to stick with the species that they have. And so now they're trying to move them further north where the gray wolf is. So, but they're going, the main thing is from non-essential to essential, it doesn't help livestock operators or whatever in the habitat. Now, wolves can travel. They could there was one point where wolves went like eighty miles to a hundred miles northwest. They crossed I forty because most wolves are south of I forty right now. But they have gone across, and they want them north of I forty in the upper echelon of the state, Colorado, and then where they can crossbreed and give them some hybrid vigor. And it violates the Endangered Species Act, number one, and number two, we've got to keep it non-essential or livestock operators in trouble, and it won't even because if it gets into the habitat and they show up somewhere where it's essential, it'll affect anybody. Any, any, any ag or oil and gas, this wolf gets in some of this habitat, or they call it habitat because it moved there. And so anyway, that's mainly what this suit's about, is to go keep it non-essential where they can manage the wolves, and that's about it. Karen Budfalle is the one that's doing it. The Coalition has used her a lot, and she is a good attorney and has done a good job for the Coalition over the many years that we've used her. So. Any questions?
Questions?
So you're asking for money?
No, this is just an FYI only. The resolution was passed a couple of years ago, and invoice has been paid, but we wanted to give you guys an update since it's been so long and just give us another explanation.
Thank you very much.
I do have a few updates, if you don't mind, on some other issues. Try to be
Go ahead.
There's a, there's another rule regulation that kind of goes along with this wolf issue. And they are looking at to adopt it in the next sixth or seventh, sixth, the sixth of this month. And what they're trying to do is, on the depredation of livestock and stuff like that, they're going into, trying to change it where it takes longer to go seed. If it was a wolf kill on the livestock operation and stuff, well, now they're trying to slow it down because they don't want to pay the livestock operator for the death loss of wolf killings of where they're at. So that's just the information deal right there, and we've submitted comments on it several, several months ago. Well, it was when y'all had the other county manager. And I, I didn't come down here much with him, but I emailed him a lot, whatever the, what was going on. What it is, is just slowing down the payment. They're trying to get, they've got an independent person per person that goes in. Now they're trying to use some of the personnel from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And if you go so far, if you go so far into the, like, you go over twenty-four, forty-eight hours, especially in the summertime, it's going to be hard to tell what killed. But these guys, if they're independent contractors, can go look and be there quickly and tell. And so, but they were trying to adopt this, and I think I may have sent Cass that. But anyway, that's kind of on that point. The, there's another issue, BLM Conservation Land Use Rule. They will finalize in April, probably around the middle of April. Where they're trying to change up the full management of the BLM policy. They have wanted to do conservation leases, implement conservation leases, where they might even be able to kick somebody off a permit for land conservation use. Like I say, they have finalized the rule. We don't know exactly what direction they may be going, but it would affect a lot of areas, including oil and gas and livestock operations. And what, what they're trying to do on the, let me see, I don't want to put this, I'm getting in trouble. Tracy Stone Manning, the BLM director, has gone, I don't know if they're going to put up a new Resource Advisory Council for this, or they're going to use the Resource Advisory Council they have now, which Resource Advisory Council could be ten or fifteen members from environmental groups, local officials, state officials, whatever, rangers, oil and gas people on this rack council. And I don't know if they're going to start up a new rack council for it. I've called the BLM, and they really didn't know. And so whether it'll be by district or region like Carl Bedd and Roswell, or a statewide council, or just incorporated into the rack council that we already have, which is kind of regional. So this is kind of a concerning deal, but we think they're in violation of these regulations of law and legal enforcement, especially under the conservation leases, which they are in violation. The other problem of it is, though, the ECEC, Areas of Critical Environmental Concern, is law, but this lease conservation or not, and they can, they can really rip people as far as land use on these areas of critical environmental concern. So, but Pacific Legal Foundation is looking at this, which is a nonprofit law firm. They represented the county, Coalition of Counties in the waters of the U.S., and we at least got it knocked back. And, but they're looking at this. The problem of it is, they're looking for it to show harm. Well, we can't show harm until they start implementing this stuff is the problem. So, but they are looking at it, and like, if it does happen, it's going to cost the Coalition maybe five hundred to a thousand dollars, and then that's it because of the way the firm's set up. So anyway, just for your information, there's a thing going on in Artesia Saturday from ten to four. It's the New Mexico Federal Lands Council, which I'm a member of, and they usually meet in Socorro because it's in the middle of the state, but they decided to have a meeting down here in the southeast. And they'll be talking a lot of federal lands issues and private property rights. But Howard Hutchins, some of the executive directors of Coalition of Counties, will be there starting at ten o'clock and probably running till noon, be talking about improving your county land use plans. And it would be good if somebody could show up from the county who wanted to be informed. We have a land use plan. We did a long time ago, but it needs to be updated. And it would be, be good if somebody could show up and listen to Howard because he's been in this deal thick and thin on these land use plans, and our land use plan is quite a ways behind. So if we could get somebody there for that couple of hours for him to explain and whatever. I went through the plan he sent us. It's a Utah County plan, but there's a lot of it in there we don't have to incorporate. Don't even prefer us, but there's a lot of good things that's in that land use plan that might help the county. And Chavis County has got a pretty good comprehensive plan also. But we'd really need to try to update ours, and if the commission's willing, and if somebody could show up Saturday from ten to twelve, it would be good.
Are you going to be there?
Um, yes.
Okay.
And then after that, the New Mexico Federal Lands Council will start their meeting from two to four. And they will have several issues that they'll be bringing up there, after the CVE building. Okay. I think I'm through, Commissioners. Any, any questions or anything like that, I'll try to answer them.
Questions? Thank you very much for your involvement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Derrick. Next, we'll move into Resolution R. twenty-four ninety-six. This is a consideration for an inducement resolution for an industrial revenue bond for Paragrain Energy Solutions in the amount of two hundred and thirty million dollars. So just as a quick recap, Paragrain and some representatives gave the commission a short presentation back in July, I believe, on this battery storage facility, which is going to be located in the Laherta area by the George Shuk route. It's about thirty acres. Again, it'll be a two hundred and thirty million dollar industrial revenue bond. This inducement resolution wouldn't bind the county. It's essentially the first step in the process. So it doesn't bind the county in any way. All it does is allow for the company to get issued an NTTC for them to purchase equipment tax-free. If the ordinance doesn't go through, then they would be required to pay that tax savings back. So that's really the only thing that this inducement resolution allows them to start doing in the process. So with that, I will turn over to Cass for any other comments.
No, she's explained it very accurately, and you had the presentation, and it's now up to the commission to make that decision, whether we want to move forward. Like she said, inducement resolution is nothing binding. Commission can decide later not to do it, if that's what they want.
Any other thing they'd like to add?
I'm kind of thinking, if it's not binding, why are they trying to get us to go that route? Maybe to set us up for later if it does come about and we are in favor of it, I mean.
Well, the inducement resolution is the first step in any IRB process. And all IRBs you guys have done before, it's always kind of the first step. You do the resolution first, and then you go down the ordinance. So it's not special in this case. It's just the first step in it.
My whole deal is, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. You're fine.
My whole deal is, when they gave the presentation, we get, we get a bump in employment during the construction phase, but there is no ongoing benefits to the county. Plus, they never explained to me what happens when the batteries run down. So I'm not in favor of it at all, so. I, I just think it's something that, that, you know, we're going to increase the industrial companies in, in Eddy County. We need to do it with things that will be ongoing, and the county and the communities benefit from it on an ongoing basis. And I don't see that in this, and so that's the reason I, I had a lot of questions that have gone unanswered. And so I don't think that it's a good deal for us at all, so I don't know though.
I've got a couple of questions that maybe Cass, you can help me with, because I kind of am in the same lines as Ernie. We had a lot of questions that didn't feel like we had a lot of answers to. And so the IRB, the life of this IRB, at the end of it, is really the end of the life of this project. Is that still correct? It's not going to continue. I mean, when IRB expires, they basically said that's probably about the time the whole project expires. So unless they completely redo it.
Right, so we did ask that question in regards to your question. So they build those racks essentially to, because we asked the question, technology advances pretty quickly, and what if technology advances before the end of the lifespan, basically? So they build those racks and So they build those racks in order to be able to insert advanced technology into them. So in regards to that question, yes, it has the ability to get upgraded essentially, but come the life, the whole end of the life, what would happen? We did ask the question, what would happen to all that equipment that's on there? And they would essentially, yes, remove all of that stuff, and you'd be left with essentially a blank pad out there on those thirty acres. So they would essentially remove all of that equipment at the end of the life.
And another question, I mean.
That would be a part of the final documents that are executed in the event we're going to adopt the ordinance.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I'm just still a little bit concerned that, and Ernie just made the same point, so I'm reiterating it, I guess, but typical IRBs that we pass, we see the life is going to go, hopefully for a long time, right? I mean, there's no guarantees on anything. But then there's also a lot of employment, a lot of other benefits that come to the county, because I, I don't see that with this. I, I see none of that.
Yeah, they've admitted that that's not.
Yeah, all they're gonna, what they even admitted was that the employment will be during the construction phase, that there'll be no employment basically during the operation.
Yeah, it's, it's an unmanned center. I mean, our, the, the revenue is coming back to us in the way of property taxes, but this isn't typically what you look at when you're looking for industrial revenue, because industrial revenue to me is income that's coming in from,
That's right.
From jobs that are here, coming in perpetuity. That's what we've done with different oil and gas plants and other things that have been approved around here, so this one's.
So what are we missing? I mean, are we missing something out there that, what, what is, minus the energy that these supposedly will store and will run the town for, what did they say, a day or two, if something other than that? And, and I'm not, I'm serious, what, what are, what are we missing? Is there something that Eddie County is gonna greatly benefit from this?
I, I mean, you, you are correct. Like we've already discussed, and like in their presentation, yes, most IRBs that we do bring in employment, short-term, long-term, and that is the bigger benefit of this, whereas this one, the biggest value is going to be the property tax coming back to Eddie County.
Um, I, I think just after hearing everybody kind of weigh in on this, I'd look for a motion to not approve or intent.
That's the motion I, I want right there.
Industrial revenue bond for R twenty-four dash ninety-six?
That's the motion I'd like.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. Next, we have our treasuries report for July twenty-two-four. This is FYI only. It's been distributed to all of the commissioners ahead of time, so unless there's any questions.
Questions? FYI only? Revenue report?
Next, we have our revenue report for July twenty-two-four. Could you move, okay, thank you. So for the July twenty-two-four, the county did receive five point nine million dollars in grocery receipts tax and seven point four million dollars in oil and gas. We are about seventeen percent up from last year, currently for our first month for grocery receipts tax. For oil and gas, we're up about six hundred thousand from prior year for July. This is for April of twenty-two-four. Oil and gas. We did have about twenty-three point four million dollars, I mean, sorry, twenty-three point four million barrels of oil for April of twenty-two-four at about eighty-one dollars a barrel. And for gas, we had about a hundred and fourteen million units at about two dollars and nineteen cents. So with that, I will stand for any questions for our revenue report.
Questions?
I have none.
For a motion to approve revenue report for July twenty-two-four?
Sound moved.
A motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you. For our July twenty-two-four budget versus actual. Our budgeted revenue countywide is three hundred and sixty-one million. Our budgeted expenses countywide are four hundred and eighty-seven million. Keep in mind, our revenue and expenses are a lot higher than normal this year because of the roughly hundred and ten million dollars that's currently budgeted for our Eddie County administration and our detention center. Actual revenue collected countywide is two hundred and five point six million, and our actual expenses are a hundred and ninety-one point two. Also keep in mind, majority of that is in our transfers. We had quite a bit of transfers this year of a hundred and eighty-four million, all of which we were about ninety percent, ninety-five percent done on the transfers. Again, the majority of that transfer is a hundred and ten million dollars for our administration billing and our detention center. And then we have about another eighty million dollars in our regular transfers, such as your road funds, your indigent funds. And then we transferred into an additional twenty-three million dollars to the capital improvement funds already budgeted for this current fiscal year. So without transfers taken into consideration, we're about twelve percent collected countywide. And we should be about eight percent right now, and we're about two percent expense, so quite a bit under expense.
Great.
For general fund, just really quick, again, we're about thirteen percent collected for general fund. As you can see, most of the departments are under that eight percent. We have a couple departments that are over. One in particular is our insurance, where we pay our insurance, because we pay our workman's comp insurance right off the bat in July. But other than that, all the other departments are under the eight percent. So with that, I will stand for any questions.
Questions? Seeing none, we'll look for a motion to approve budget versus actual July revenue and expenses.
Sound moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have D F A Local Government Division approval of the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. This is just more of a routine. You guys have already approved the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. D F A has now approved it, so according to six-six-five of the constitution, we're required to put it in part of the meeting minutes for the commission meeting, so this is just an approval of your approval.
Government at its finest.
Yes.
Department, I look for a motion to approve the Department of Finance Local Government Division approval of fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Sound moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. And with that being said, I'll be posting the budget to the financial system later on today and sending out an email to all the department heads and elected officials. Next, we have discussion direction and possible vote on the twenty-three, twenty-four surplus. Again, every year we bring this to commission around this time for your consideration to move last year's surplus into capital improvements funds for any capital future needs that we may have. Currently, right now, we're going to need roughly about a hundred and ninety-eight million dollars for administration detention and the civil site work, along with our facilities building out at the complex that we are now doing. We currently have all of that available in cash. Part of this surplus will go in part to that, leaving about roughly another forty million left for your consideration. That'll be sitting in the capital improvement fund outside of what you guys have already approved.
Does anybody have any questions or other direction they'd like to go with that?
I don't know. I necessarily have a different direction or discussion, but I would like to, at some point, understand what Lee County's doing different than us. And I know we've had this discussion before, but I know Lee County's heavily investing in their communities to try to grow the county, or their health by housing, by some different, different things. We've seen some, I've seen a few different presentations. Have you gone to that? When is that next one?
It was actually our last commission meeting, and I was wanting to go to it, but because of our commission meeting, I was unable to attend it.
So I know they've given a couple of different presentations, so not saying that's where this, we need to talk, take this today, but, but it would be something I would be interested in seeing consideration at some point on, on how do we help maybe invest in some of those things to benefit the county as a whole.
And I would a hundred percent agree with you, and really the main reason for moving it into the capital improvement fund is so that it just doesn't sit in our unrestricted general fund, and it sits in a restricted fund where at any point it can come back to you guys through an agenda request, and we can do exactly just that or any other thing you guys wanted to do with it. So it's not that it has to go to capital improvement per se, but it just sits in the capital improvement fund. If you guys wish to re-operate that, it could also do that.
Hearing that, then I'll look for a motion to transfer the surplus to the capital improvement fund for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion in two seconds. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. Next, we have Grant Administrator grade change from sixty-four to sixty-nine. So back in May, we did do a reclassification of the procurement manager, reclassifying them to a procurement administrator in order to align better with the, the new position of grants administrator that we had approved for this current fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. But in doing that, the money was not aligned at the same time. Therefore, the grant administrator was making significantly less than the procurement administrator. So I am bringing this back to you for your consideration to ask if you would increase this grade from a sixty-four to a sixty-nine, so that both of them would be equivalent.
That's a valid reason.
Yep.
I make a motion if we do that.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have request to set for consideration a public hearing, a ten-year non-exclusive franchise agreement for Valor Telecommunications of Texas LLC, D B A Windstream Communications Southwest for October first, twenty-two-four. Mr. McCroskey?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Just coming back before you real quick here to get approval to set for a public hearing on October first, possible adoption of an additional franchise agreement that we've not ever apparently had that I can find with Windstream, Valor Communications. We've had Cass, myself, review the franchise agreement as well as send it to Valor. They reviewed it. Some small verbiage was, was adjusted and stuff, and just wanted to get this thing back before you guys on October first, if we can.
Anything to add, guys? Questions? Look for a motion to set a consideration for public hearing for Valor or Windstream on October first, twenty-two-four.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Next, we have recognition of citizen Charles, and I don't, when it's, Duhon, okay, I didn't want to butcher his last name. Chief Mack?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, so on August twentieth, we had a report of a structured fire on Townview. The crew was out on another accident. We had one guy in the station responded on scene less than five minutes. Got there, pulled his hose, went around the back where the smoke was coming from. Back porch in the house had been on fire. Mr. Duhon was standing there with a garden hose. He was able to get it out. I arrived right behind the tanker. We made entry into the house. Multiple animals were able to evacuate. So without his actions, running from his shop at the corner of Derrick and Thomason, obviously the outcome would have been different, so. The owner showed up, was very thankful, and her child was actually homesick prior to that. She went home, checked on him, and he was doing better, so she took him back to school, so. Depending on the circumstances, this could have been a whole different type of fire. So his actions were, want to be recognized, so I had a certificate made. Commissioner Carlson signed it. I believe Chairman Bowen signed it. So I'll be presenting him with that and a chief's challenge coin. I tried to get him to come this morning, but he was unavailable, so. Any questions or comments?
I think it's great to recognize somebody that's done something like that.
Please pass along from us that we're very grateful.
Thank you all very much. Have a great day.
Next, we'll move into our resolution and agreement consent agenda.
Any items that we need to pull for further discussion?
And I'll look for a motion to approve the resolution and agree with consent agenda after agenda. Sound moved.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard? Thank you. Next, we'll move into our travel request consent agenda. I do need a full item A of the future travel request.
I'll look for a motion to look through the travel request consent agenda, removing item A for future travel. Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. We do not have any emergency business. I do not have any legislative comments, announcements, or updates. So we'll move into elected official department comments. Good morning, commissioners.
I received the twenty-two-four downtrays late Friday afternoon. State statute says that I have to have them approved by the commission within five days. And so I just want to thank the commissioners and Roberta, Adrian, and Tiana for getting a quickly scheduled meeting for tomorrow at four o'clock. And I have contacted P T D in the past about, you know, this five-day getting approved within five days. And last year when I talked to P T D, they told me that it is included for weekends and holidays, so that really puts us in a bind, so. I'm gonna try to get with the P T D director and make sure that what I was told was correct, but I haven't been able to contact him this weekend, so. I will do that this afternoon just to make sure, but I just wanted to thank you guys for acting so quickly on this. Thank you.
Oh, so short-sighted is, they have, D F A has five days to send out that order, and they pick Friday afternoon at three in the afternoon on a holiday weekend. And that's just lunacy. That's lunacy.
Yeah, in the past, except for this year and last year, they've always sent it like right after the holidays, so that we have pretty much a whole week to try to get some of these schedules. In the last couple of years, it's been like a Friday afternoon before the weekend hits and the holiday hits, and it's just, it really puts us in a bind, but I just.
Lee County, I guess they got theirs Friday also. They had no idea when I called the Lee County attorney on Sunday. He said, what are you talking about? And so I think they're gonna set theirs for Monday week, just so we're not, we're not gonna count the holiday.
Right, and I don't think it should be. I mean, nobody's at work. We can't really schedule.
Yeah, she received the order on Thursday, but she didn't send it out until Friday.
Three o'clock in the afternoon.
We got there Thursday, we could have done so.
Yes.
Left us one day, pretty much.
But I'm gonna do, I am gonna confirm with P T D director to make sure that it doesn't include the weekends and the holidays, because to me, that just doesn't make any sense. It should be five business weeks, but that is what I was told last year, and so that's the reason why I acted on it so quickly over the weekend. And then Roberta was able to help me out with that, and I just wanted to thank you again for the discussion, and that's a quick week. And I will see you guys tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. First, I want to recognize loving police chief Mike Byrd for showing up here. I appreciate it. Chief?
Thank you, sir.
It's refreshing to have a. It's refreshing to have a healthy cooperative relationship with the Loving Police Department, and we're doing quite a bit together now. We already have an SRO and what you approved in the resolution consent agenda. We have one picked out to be out there at Loving, and I think it's a very appropriate use of resources, the sharing of resources. And the one-third, one-third, and one-third by us Loving Schools and the Village of Loving makes a whole lot of sense. So thank you for helping me with that, Roberta, I appreciate that. The Pecos Valley Drug Task Force, we met, our executive board met, and if you haven't heard yet, Commander Leos is retiring before the end of the year. And he's yet to give me his retirement letter. I think he's holding off as long as he can, but it's going to be a difficult transition for him. But I will say that we met and we have selected Sergeant Luis Ortega to take over as commander. He's already in a training role with Leos right now. And as soon as I, I have a letter already put together for Sergeant Ortega, soon to be Commander Ortega. And as soon as I get Leos' retirement letter, pride out of his hands, we'll get that set up. And we also selected Sergeant John Sneakin for the Carlsbad Police Department to be the assistant commander. And so I think we're going to have a good, solid transition of leadership and continuity at the Drug Task Force. That being said, that kind of segues me into, I've been reading quite a bit on social media and in the news about some people refuting the assertions about Trandaragua. I think I spoke to you all about them, I may not have. TDA, it is an extremely violent Venezuelan criminal gang. And this is something we've never seen before, that quite, this, the arrogance and the violence that these gangs are perpetrating on Americans. They, they're, gee whiz, right? They came across our southern border, right down south of us, and they have taken over, El Paso PD is struggling. And this is all, none of this is hearsay, none of this is stories of horror and all that. This is from a direct briefing from US Border Patrol to us at our latest HIDA conference staff in Rios. These folks are coming across and they're setting up shop here, and they're taking over apartment complexes. This is being refuted in the media, obviously, and by people on social media saying, there's no proof of this. Well, I got proof of it. US Border Patrol has proof of it. And what they're doing is they're taking over these apartment complexes, basically, and they're renting on their own to other illegals. It's insanity. And the police departments are struggling because these people are so violent. And usually what the cartels have done is they've said, look, don't mess with law enforcement. We don't want to bring that to our shores. These, they're, these people don't care. They would prefer to get away, but if not, they're going to fight it out. And they're heavily armed, they're very motivated. And again, like I said, they're taking over areas in US cities now. They're up in Colorado. Colorado, I think the governor's saying, oh no, that's not really happening. Seriously? It's happening. El Paso PD has actually, they've gone to a zero tolerance policy where they are enforcing everything from jaywalking to littering to everything on these folks, just to get them arrested. They don't have a lot of, like, I think everybody's heard of MS thirteen with all the tattoos and everything. That's the Mexican gang, criminal gang that's been coming over. And these folks, the Trandaragua, they don't have, generally don't have any distinctive tattoos. You used to see some of the Michael Jordan symbol, they liked that for some reason. But they're not, they're not, it's hard to distinguish. And interestingly enough, one of the ways that they work, that they are being distinguished is the Venezuelan police despise these people so bad that when they arrest them, they shoot them in their left leg. So that's how you, that's how Border Patrol posts, that's how we're identifying, is if they have a bullet wound scar in their left leg, they know that they are TDA because that's what the Venezuelan police are doing. Interestingly enough, too, they are not the most violent gang in Venezuela. Because there are other gangs that have come up that have to contend with them. And they're not here yet. They're coming. I promise you, they're coming. If TDA is here, they're seeing how easy it is. And here's the really sad part about it is TDA has specifically said, not New Mexico, American law enforcement is weak. And the reason they're saying we're weak is because we follow the rules. We have to follow the rules. They have no rules to follow, they don't care. So they say, well, we don't have to worry about it because the law enforcement has to follow the rules. So this is frightening, and what's even more frightening, though, is what's going on in the media and on social media where they're saying that this is not happening. I don't, it astounds that we've come to that, that point in time where our media, and not talking about our good folks over here, but nationally, our media is participating in the destruction of the United States. And it's really sad because this is dangerous. And look it up, TDA, look them up if you haven't seen anything on yet. And don't believe what they're telling you because we have direct information saying they are here. They're not here that we know of in Eddie County yet. We're keeping a close eye on it. But that's another reason why we have to continue to support the Pecos Valley Drug Task Force and continue to keep them staff and keep them working and get them whatever they need. Because they're the ones who are going to see this first. They're going to have the intel on it. I'm working closely with ATF and with Border Patrol Customs and, because I explained to them, I said, we're just a direct conduit right from El Paso. If El Paso is getting hammered like this, when are we going to start seeing it? So we're, I'm staying in close contact with them, keep them very close eye on this, but it's frightening. It honestly is, it's disturbing. So anyway, that's my uplifting report. But yeah, so any questions on any of that?
If you don't mind.
Please.
What are they, obviously they're violent, is it fentanyl, I mean, what is their primary?
Drugs, yeah, fentanyl, fentanyl. That's one of the things that kind of shocked me in the latest report that came out. Methamphetamine is still king. We are still seizing, I thought, I thought it did drop. I didn't realize how big, how much of a comeback it has made. We're seizing more meth than we are fentanyl. And then I found out why. The cartels are moving away from fentanyl. They're not using so, doing so much fentanyl, it's more human trafficking that they move towards. They're making, they can make so much more money because fentanyl, the price has gone down and down and down and down and down. If people aren't learning, they're still overdosing on it. I mean, that's a, that's a given. We see it all the time. As a matter of fact, when my son was working nights just recently at Carlsbad PD, he said, they go and narc in some of these folks that were dead. They wake up and they were mad at them for running their high. It's like, you were dead, dude? What don't you understand about that? So people still aren't learning about the fentanyl, and I'm sure you can tell some horror stories about that, Commissioner. But meth has made a comeback, and it's strong, and it's the second biggest killer right behind fentanyl in New Mexico. It's still, we're still killing people with meth and fentanyl. But they are moving towards the human trafficking part. That's heavy, very heavy. And it's mostly women and children that they're doing the human trafficking because they're moving them through and they're selling these folks for lots of money, human beings, they're selling human beings for a lot of them. We're facilitating it with our open border. I mean, that's no longer, you know, rhetoric. People think, always thought it was rhetoric, it's not rhetoric. There's absolute proof of it. So, yes.
Well, and just to add, you know, what we're seeing with like methamphetamines nowadays, it's the number one reason for acute drug-induced psychosis. You know, yes, people have psychosis, but methamphetamines nowadays are not made how they used to be made. And so it's very cheap product that's just around, it's being made by people who think they know what they're doing in the Mexican cartels. But once that happens, it's very hard to walk the side effects back. I mean, that can be permanent in most individuals. So, you know, methamphetamines have a direct impact onto or into what we're seeing from a mental health standpoint and what's happening in addiction. So, you know, we need to just encourage people to stay away.
Well, they're using a fentanyl, but they're using a stimulant along with it, like meth or something of that nature. And when they get arrested and put in jail, this is what Billy has to do, it was him and his folks. Once that stimulant runs out, the fentanyl is still there, and that's why people OD. Because the stimulant quit keeping their body up and they come down and they die. And so that's a huge issue that we're dealing with. And it's astounding that we haven't, I don't know how we get a hold of it, I really don't. We tried education, we tried arresting, we tried incarceration, and none of it seems to help.
I don't want to continue to comment. I don't understand to the point of with that amount of folks coming across. You know, it'd be interesting for some sort of presentation to help maybe educate us, or maybe I'm the only one that's ignorant to this. How in the world does that amount of folks get sent across, spread into the community, the country, and not be recognized? And maybe it's because I don't live in the world, I don't have a clue, but to me, I don't understand how that amount of folks are being crossed. Because I think that's disgusting, and I don't understand how it, how it's continuing, has not been talked about, how nothing, I shouldn't say nothing being done. I think on lower levels it obviously is, but nobody's even mentioning this. I mean, we're still talking fentanyl, which infuriates me that that's being allowed as well. But this whole other piece, if that's what they're moving to because that's where the money's at, how is?
How? Well, again, because it's not, the reason it's getting by is because it's not popular to talk about. Because that means that we have to acknowledge that there's an issue at the border. And in Santa Fe, we still haven't acknowledged that, really. Do you hear anything? It's crickets coming out of Santa Fe. And there's definitely nothing happening. There's nothing being, we, that's one of our priorities with New Mexico counties, and we push this hard, is we're looking for an appropriation to stand up some task forces to work on. And we understand we can't do border enforcement, that's not our job to do. But we can enforce existing laws, drug trafficking, human trafficking. We can set up some task forces to go down and tackle that. Of course, that's assuming that we have enough cops to do it because nobody wants to be a cop in Mexico because of so many different things. Qualified immunity being one of them, and the New Mexico Civil Rights Act, kind of a mask here of this. But, yeah, it's, and if you would like, if y'all would like collectively a presentation, I can get ahold of Border Patrol Commander, he's a friend of mine, and I'm sure that they'd be happy to come down here and talk about it and give you the same presentation that they gave us at the HIDA.
I'd love that.
Yeah, if you could set that up, that'd be great.
I'll facilitate that and get that to happen. I'll tell you now, it'll scare the hell out of you. It's eye-opening because I was shocked by some of the things, and they keep me updated with some of the new stuff. That TDA, it's unreal.
Bowen, how do we even, maybe it's not even just a presentation to us. I mean, I would love to, the public needs to understand these things because it's terrifying and it's happening right everywhere. And we've turned, I don't want to say we've turned a blind eye, that's not fair. I think a lot of us don't even understand what we're seeing necessarily, maybe that's a more fair statement. And I'd like to educate people, I mean, here's what we're looking for, here's what you're seeing, here's the things, and maybe that could help some of these folks.
Well, most, most everybody's civilized human beings. We go about our lives trying to be productive, you know, caring about other humans, trying to do, these people are not. And that's, it's hard for people to comprehend that. I mean, I've been doing this my whole life, Mike's been doing this. You know, we get it, we've seen the ugliest parts of society, and we're used to it. I guess if you can ever be used to it. But it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily surprise us so much. But the average citizen doesn't see anything close to what these people are capable of, nothing close. And so I think that's the biggest thing is we're all citizens of the United States of America, this ain't going to happen here. Well, guess what? It's happening.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we try to set something up, but instead of it being done through a commission, we have a special, or have it set up at a place where the public can be involved? Maybe we get Pecos River Village or some other place where we can host a few, as many people that want to attend, but more than what we can seat here.
Let me see what I can do. I think they'd be agreeable to that.
If not, we'll take this.
Yeah, I'll, let me, let me see what they're agreeable to, because they do have some limitations because of their bosses.
Good enough.
So, and I mean, worst-case scenario, I can, I can bring the presentation in. But I'm pretty sure I can get them to come at least for this. I would like to do what you're talking about, Commissioner Bowen, and I will find out, but they do have some limitations on what they're allowed to do.
Well, if they give us the presentation, would they allow you to give it?
Oh, sure, they'll let, yeah, they'll let me have it.
Maybe we can set up some town halls where even you give the presentation here or teach it.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
And the more information we can get out, because I think you're right, I think so many of us are very ignorant.
I'd be happy to, and that might even be a better way of doing it, is to, and I can, I can get Leos or Ortega to come and assist with that.
I was going to mention, maybe they could be involved or something.
Okay, well, we can make that happen. Again, uplifting report from the show.
Thank you.
Yes. Burns will make it all better.
Mine's not near as gloomy as that. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, real quick, a couple of things. We finally got a little bit of rain, so good about that. Hallelujah, that's right. I'm happy to report that all of our little water crossings that we've worked on and done our concrete water crossings and West Loop, Dark Canyon Marathon, all working perfectly. So we had no damage on any of the ones that we've worked on. Crews are out this morning cleaning them off, and they should be back open here shortly. So they worked exactly as intended, and we closed them when it started raining and had a few incidents, you know, follow traffic control. But other than that, we'll have them cleaned off and back open this afternoon, so.
Thank you.
The other thing is, we went last week to the City of Carlsbad's council meeting and spoke in support of their plastic bag initiative. We support this from a landfill standpoint because plastic bags are our main problem out there with blowing over the fences and being what we have to chase and clean up. So we're very much in support of this from a county standpoint, from a landfill standpoint, and from a transportation standpoint. Even with us covering loads and roll-offs, they still fall out, they are hard to tie down. Even with daily cover and every effort that we make, they're still very much an issue for us at the landfill. So we went and spoke in support of that from an illegal dumping standpoint. And we think it's a real good first step. They're going to continue to work on it, but we did go speak in support of it, so. That's all I have this one. That's all I have this morning.
How did diversion work on the loop? I know in the past that it's been a very contentious issue, did we really get enough rain to really test that?
In relativity, this was a very small rain event, this is not near a flood event. Um, I think throughout the county, I was hearing two, two and a half inches in the north, I think we got about that here. So it wasn't nearly the concentration that we got, I don't even think Dark Canyon ran, I think the one that ran was McKittrick. Which is why Dark Canyon and, and Boyd radio was ended up closed, because McKittrick will come down and close that one, but. Yeah, the diversion, there was water under it, didn't even get close to the height of it, um, there was standing water there, but as far as I can tell, the drainage on the West Loop, all in all, all the way from, uh, Lee Street to the diversion, down to the McKittrick Crossing, worked as intended, so we did a little shoring up during the last rain event we had in twenty twenty-two. And it, it all, it all worked very, we had very minimal, actually really no damage, so we're, it worked exactly as intended. We got loaded up this morning, moving the rocks off the road, it's gonna be open, so. It's, we're gonna try, um, so we budgeted money this year to go and shore up and, and really maintenance Longhorn Bridge. There's some issue on that one, and as we're down there doing Longhorn Road, we're doing Longhorn Bridge. We'll come back to you in the spring, maybe if we get that one done and ask for a little more money on the bridges to continue our initiatives with the low-water crossings up Dark Canyon. We did see a little erosion at the crossings, um, just past the one we just completed with the concrete. So it's nothing that's gonna close the road, but, you know, one at a time, as we go up there and continue to work up Dark Canyon and a few of these other ones, so. We'll, uh, we'll continue with the plan, plan's working, so. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Just a couple of updates. He, uh, he stole my sunshine with the, uh, with the rain thing, but we're glad to have that. Um, I just wanna thank all the agencies that worked together this weekend to bring the roads, to close the roads and get guys out there to check the roads. We had at least five roads in Artesia and Fortive and Carlsbad that ended up being closed, but all the agencies worked well together. Um, Artesia Fire, um, Carlsbad Fire, Eddie County Fire, they all, and Loving PD helped. Mayor Quintero reached out to me from the Village of Loving last night to let me know that, um, we needed to help spread the word that the traffic light at the All Subs on two eighty-five will be being tested on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then it will go operational, scheduled for operational on Friday, um, if everything works out. If there's any changes or updates, then he'll let us know. And I just wanna also thank Savannah, our new PIO, and Dugus. We, the three of us have been kind of working together on getting the same message across the board out to the citizens. Um, and then also the Loving Police Department, Chief Byrd, and the Eddie County Fire Department. We, um, I was asked, OEM was asked to help coordinate, um, some help with United Way, um, who had a food distribution in Loving, and they were shorthanded, and so last minute we, we got together and Chief Mack was able to send some of his guys, and Chief Byrd himself showed up and a couple of other guys, so just wanna give a thanks out to them as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, so I just have one update aside from all the water this weekend, which was nice. Tuesday, we had a structure fire up in Queen in the evening. The volunteers were out training with staff, and they noticed some smoke, so they went over to investigate, found the house fully involved, so. They were able to extinguish it. Um, having those nine volunteers up there was really handy, reduced response of people from down south to go up there. And then the next day, we actually had a rekindle, and we sent out a text, and they responded quickly over there and were able to finish cooling it down while we responded up, so. Um, tonight, they're getting issued their gear, they've completed all their basic training to be able to drive, operate, and fight fire defensively up there, and they've had their first aid and CPR, so we're moving, stepping in the right direction, so. We have twenty total on the roster still, just nine of them have been available, do their training, the rest have made accommodations for whenever they get done with some of the activities that they have going on currently, with travel and things like that, they'll be in to finish up their stuff, so. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Margaret, thank God.
Good morning, Commissioners. I just wanted to give you an update on our job fair that we had a couple of weeks ago, it went really well. Uh, we still had people there after seven o'clock, uh, when we had stopped and they were working on the computers that we had set up where they could apply right then. And like, I thank IT for coming and setting up those computers, and we could have the people apply right then. Everyone talked with the people that came to the doors. Uh, I appreciate our department head and the length of officials setting people there, because they could explain the job that we were looking for a whole lot better than what we could. I'm gonna say we had like fifty-five people come and apply, and that's more than the four people that we have when we do it over here, and the thing, so that was really good. They liked the hot dogs and the cookies, but I think it went really well, and we got to talk to people. Uh, and they got to learn about what the different departments do. Sherelle was directing in that way, and she wouldn't let them out until they went over and applied, so. Uh, I can't tell you how many of those are in the process and still going, uh, but we were happy with the results. So I just wanted to thank everyone for participating and helping, and it went well, and here in another three or four months, we'll do it again. And people, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Uh, moving on to county manager comments, uh, I just have one. With my last official day as county manager, I just want to thank each of the commissioners here for all their support. Um, and I'm truly grateful from the bottom of my heart for each of you giving me this opportunity to lead this very, very passionate group of residents and employees, and I've had, um, a great exciting time this last year and a half. So I just want to say thank you to each of you for giving me that opportunity. And I look forward to still serving the residents and working with everyone as a finance director in the finance capacity, so, thank you. I'll turn it over to you, Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Beard.
Uh, I'm not sure how to go about this, I've got more questions than I do statements, but we seem to hear from Mr. Rinco very regularly on the abortion issue. Is there really anything that this county can do to stop abortion in this county?
Yeah, they passed these, passed these ordinances and things of that nature that have been challenged at present time. I mean, most counties will not do that because of the voters.
Well, yeah, and I think it's gonna be overturned farther up the ladder. I mean, if we had the authority to do something like that, I think we'd probably shut down about a half a dozen dispensaries around Eddie County. Uh, yeah, that, that's kinda out of our available, essentially. I think the pressure with this and the other needs to be in Santa Fe. With that, I'll, I think that's all I need to say. Queen, I'm very tickled to hear about the firefighters and their response to Queen area. I know at one point there were a lot of concerned folks up there about that issue. It's obviously been handled, and handled very well. I'd also like to say I very much support this anti-government takeover, the thirty-by-thirty, the whatever they're calling it these days, the wheel shoe deal. I mean, guys, this is just big government, and it's, it's coming our way sooner or later, so. And I'll end with, let's, uh, thank our Lord and Savior for the rain. I think there's been a lot of prayers right now while I was lying. We sent it, we need it, on for one, ready for more, so.
Commissioner Henry?
Very short. You know, looking at, obviously it's political season, it has been for quite some time. I think our best defense is education, uh, because unfortunately, I think we have a complacent media that is not going to help folks understand exactly what's going on. Thirty by thirty is a great example, what we just talked about with the sheriff is a great example. There's a lot of stuff going on in our state, in our county, in our country. And I think a lot of the times, unfortunately, folks are getting their information from news stations that are not, for the most part, not going to cover it the way that probably fairly and unbiasedly you used to see covered. So I think the more education we can get out there, the more town, I don't know what they are. It's been something we've been talking about for a long time on a lot of different spots that it feels like I talk about. But I think getting folks to understand what does thirty by thirty mean, how does it impact the meat that's coming to your table, just like, you know, Commissioner Derek talked about, what did y'all call it? The no cow and ninety?
What, what cattle-free and ninety-three?
Cattle-free and ninety-three, that's about the dumbest idea I've ever heard in my life, um, and they've come up with some dumb ones, I hadn't heard, that's really shocking to me. That those types of things are pushed, and that, you know, folks are excited to rally around it for whatever reason. Um, and I think a lot of times it's because they have no idea how that truly impacts their day-to-day lives. So how do we get that information out? I don't know, I'm all ears, and I'm, I'll do whatever we can, because, um, you know, whether, it doesn't matter what side, I don't care about any of that. I want folks to have educated, formed opinion when they start to go and vote on these things, or to talk about these things, and not have a news opinion. Because the news opinions are, are very dangerous, because you're not getting on either side, you're not getting the full scope of what really truly is happening. So how do we do that, I'm not sure, but if folks have ideas, I would love to hear them, um, and love to, to continue that, because I do think that's our biggest, uh, piece of, of, our ways to get things out is through proper communication. That's why I'm glad we have it now at Eddie County, Artesia, and the City of Carlsbad, I've been using it for quite a while very effectively. Um, you know it works when nonsense gets put out on Facebook, and you have your citizens responding saying, here's what's really going on, and here's where you can go find that information. So it does work, and people are, are anxious to hear and are anxious to grab it. So the more we can do there, the better, and that's just my thoughts on that. Um, lots of great things happening in the county, obviously, uh, lots of sports are going on in the county. Um, so off to a good start for, really for, I know the first game was rough in Carlsbad, y'all's second game was better. Uh, our first game was really good, our second game was good, just not quite as good as we, we had planned. Looks like everybody's off to a good start. Wish all those kids in all the sports well this year, and hopefully this side of the state will represent well in, in all aspects, so. But I'll leave it at that, I will, I will.
Commissioner Carlson?
Uh, I agree with what Commissioner Henry said, uh, our best weapon against ignorance is education. And so the more times that we can, can educate the public, uh, whether it's through about drugs or, or some of this other, uh, things, it makes our job a lot easier, it makes the public more well informed, and can make a better decision at the ballot box, and, uh, so I think that's great. My God for the rain.
Well, I, I agree with the points about education, I've always felt that, you know, imparting knowledge is the best way to combat, um, problems and just enlighten people on what's happening. But I also feel that, I feel that people need to make an investment in their community to understand what's happening. As glamorous as it may not be, I think a lot of times we might, as if, you know, a situation like human trafficking or drug abuse, I think people feel that it's not my problem, if it's not happening in my home, it's not my problem. But the reality is, is if your kids are in school, um, you know, you're living in this community, it is your problem. And any efforts that we can make to educate, recognize, know what resources are out there available, um, to report this, or, you know, just, um, you know, talking to your children about what to stray away from, I think it matters. And every little conversation like that matters. So I'm grateful for the work that our law enforcement, our fire and rescue, I'm so happy to hear of the success of the, uh, job fair. That's a lot of people, fifty-five people filling out applications, that's a lot, that's gonna take a long time for you guys to process that, I'm sure. Um, so great job there, and I just wanna say thank you, Roberta, um, we appreciate your year and a half here leading the county very, very much. And I'm so glad that you're gonna be staying on board, um, to lead the finance department again, so thank you.
First, I'd like to acknowledge Chief Byrd for being here, thank you for showing up, for attending, I like to see the presence from Loving here with the county, it's really cool to see. Um, congratulations to Sergeant Ortega and Sergeant Sneeden for their upcoming promotions with the Haida Task Force, that's really cool. Sheriff, I appreciate your depressing, grim update, um, it's good knowledge for us to have, and it's great knowledge for the public to be aware of. I'm happy to hear that the Queen volunteers have now been armed with their equipment, or they will be armed with their equipment, and they were able to show that what they have learned in training was able to actually be used. Okay, that sounds good. I, I'm sorry that they had to use their training, but I'm glad that the training worked, and that they're able to execute it to, um, control a fire up there. In regards to the Peregrin IRB, I just wanna point out, you know, Eddie County is a very pro-business county. I think we're very happy to welcome in businesses and support businesses that wanna come in. Peregrin was a different deal, because they weren't looking to bring an influx of employees in that would benefit the county in the way that we're looking for growing long-term. So to shoot down an IRB or, or a potential IRB isn't the county saying we're not pro-business, it's saying this wasn't the right fit at this time for us. Um, I'd like to thank Commissioner Derek for coming in and giving us his updates on the thirty-by-thirty, or America the Beautiful, frightening land grab that's trying to be presented. And lastly, Roberta, thank you, thank you for the year and a half of being here, thank you for your leadership, your mentorship, and everything else that you've embarked on, on all of us over the past year and a half, so thank you. Um, I have nothing else to say.
Mr. Chairman, we do have executive session.
Okay.
Look for a mo- motion for the board to go into executive session according to the State of Mexico Open Meetings Act, section ten dash fifteen dash one dash eight, section two, which authorizes the Board of County Commissioners to go into executive session to discuss, none of the personnel matters. Contract personnel for detention center, contract personnel for inter-county management position.
Tell them.
Motion in a second.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners will be doing executive session up on our third floor, and it'll roughly be about thirty minutes.
So ten-thirty.